Three quick items. One, the backyard barbecue bash sponsored by The Chamber this weekend, I think was well attended. Good comments about, I think there was expectation and concerns about the streetscape, but the contractors did a great job cleaning it up and we had good access and people seemed to enjoy it. And we continue to work with those folks who have events throughout the year. The next event downtown will be the homecoming parade, so we've worked with the school district on that route and we'll continue to work with them. One thing that we did find, and the mayor and I have talked about this, we provided some temporary lighting for setup for the backyard barbecue and had some merchants downtown with questions about that. And as we get into winter months, the light poles will not be set for at least four months. They won't be ordered for a while and it's a three monthly time. So they're staging that in that way. So Brett has contacted the company that we rented those lights from and we've gotten a really good monthly rate. So we will put those, as we get into the time when it will be darker earlier, we'll have one light set in the courtyard to kind of illuminate the area for folks to make it a little more safe. You have at your places information for the Northland Clay County EBC luncheon for the Look North Awards. If you're interested in attending, you will like to know. That way we can get enough for a table. We'll purchase a table and we'll get those tickets taken care of. And finally, the applications for the Assistant City Administrator close on Thursday. And Dan and I have reviewed those applications and have narrowed a pool of 13 to three. And we've scheduled interviews for next week. And Alderman, Sarver, Wilson, and Mayor Bowley will sit on that committee along with reps from the Economic Development Community and city staff. So we will have a process similar to what you all put knee through. We will have, Chief will do a tour and then we'll have two panels. And it'll be mixed panels of board members with Economic Development folks and staff on both of the panels. We'll have those next Monday morning. And as I said, we've got three candidates. So excited to get that process moving. And I believe that's all that I have. Can I skip to number four? Is that okay?
Sure. Question if I could.
Oh, yeah.
Under, since you brought up streetscape.
Yes.
I know you were looking at a couple of the issues that kind of question that come up. Any updates?
With regard to your question that was raised last week?
Yes.
Yes. The engineers are looking at the slope of the sidewalk as to how much the concrete and brick area may be able to change. We've not heard back from them. They've had several things they've been working on both in relation to that and a number of projects throughout town. So I will follow up again with them tomorrow. The biggest issue really there is, and Friday afternoon, as I was walking around getting ready for kind of looking at how things were going to be for the weekend, standing up corner at Bridge and Church, that's where you really notice the slope issue. Trying to engineer for that end of the street and make it flow all the way down the street, there is as much as eight-foot slope. And we're trying to stay within that and perhaps reduce the brick area. We are, the engineers are looking at that. And as we have that information, we'll be able to share. Thank you for that reminder.
Yes, you can.
We realized in staff meeting last week that we've done really good up to ensure that our police officers, as they're newly hired, are here to meet you all because they're sworn in. But we have, we have one employee who has been shorter tenured than me. And that's Kayla Martin, our co-inspector. She started July 30th and has come on board and has done a great job representing the city and really out there working and helping to clean things up. She came here most recently from the Dallas area, right? Worked in code enforcement there, has also worked for the Kansas City Housing Authority as well as the City of Kansas and Missouri. So she brings a great deal of experience. And I think I shared with you all also, we joked a little bit earlier, but one of the things that she's recommended in her very short tenure is a door hanger to let people know that, hey, drove by, saw something, work on getting in line.
Already working on it.
Exactly. Just to kind of get information out to folks that, hey, we're watching, we're trying to clean things up. And it's kind of a courtesy call to folks. So.
You want, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You want to bring it up? I'll pass it around.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say that the short time I've been here, I'm really enjoying everybody. It's kind of just like a family here. They're in the kitchen making cinnamon roll. I mean, it's great. I've dealt with some of the citizens and everybody's just being quiet. I mean, I have a complication that I didn't have. So it's funny.
You're good.
I'm the girl.
I'm marking for you.
You're welcome.
I marked it already.
Okay.
And I updated it. Any public comment? Awesome. Okay, budget. Second review. Dan, you're up. I left your present on your desk.
I'll share. Thank you for having me back here. I am here to follow up on some of the items that we discussed two weeks ago regarding the fiscal year 2018 budget. I've sent out a staff report in your packets. We'll just come onto these items and see if there's an additional conversation that we want to have on what to include or what not to include. So after our discussion on September 10th, we've added $4,000 to the Police Department budget for a pilot run at the Police Academy recruit position, looking at maybe doing that one time in this next budget year. We've also added $55,000 and some change to the Police Department as well for the second school resource officer. So do you have any questions about either of those two items being added to the budget? We also add some benchmarks for both the senior center and the animal shelter as well. Something that we didn't talk about last two weeks ago, but it does affect the 2019 budget, is in the 18 budget, we have $150,000 budgeted for playground equipment over at Area 2 Park. We discussed that for six months or so. But just with the timing of the RFP going out, going back to the park board before it comes to you for approval, it's not going to get done and paid by the 18 budget. So I pulled that out of the 18 budget, showing that our cash balance at the end of 18 actually increased. And then I moved it into the 19 budget. So we're expending that money in 19. It's still the $150,000 that we've always talked about. But what it does do is it takes that positive number that we had in revenues being higher than expenditures in 19 and it made that negative. So now it appears as though we're in deficit spending.
Increased our reserve number two, right?
It did. Because of the $150,000 being expended in 19, we have to, by policy, reserve 40% of that as part of our reserve. So it made our reserve go up by about $60,000, our required reserve increase by about $60,000.
Order of expenses.
And also, I did note it in here, but in the fiscal year 18, projected ending balance is also the expense for the land purchase. That, has only had first shooting?
Correct. Second.
So second is going to come next week. I didn't include that. Any questions about that?
So that does change our ending fund balance for the end of 19, or excuse me, 18, and then the end of fund balance for 19 as well. So.
So after, and after those items, we are still looking at, at the end of 19, a projected $200,000 over and above the required reserve amount.
Just general question.
Sure.
Those that have been on the board with new vehicles, I seen on Facebook where they were putting the decals on, are the city?
In the 18 budget.
In the 18 budget. So.
But those just arrived, right?
Correct. A month ago maybe we cut that.
Actually, they just did the street. It's just passing.
So with that, do we need, seriously need to purchase in 19 again?
I believe we would cut that already back to division one.
I know, but that's, that would be $44,000.
If not, I expect a possible increase in maintenance line. I think if we're seeing the vehicle as hitting 100-plus thousand miles, I think we'd want to look in a place where that's maybe being $130,000, $140,000 mile range. By the time we would be getting a new vehicle replaced.
And that's one of the items when we had talked last week, equipment review in general. I'd like to be able to look at that. And one of the things that I've recommended is that even those budgeted vehicles not be purchased till we have a chance to take a look at that. That's one of the things that I have on the list. Dan and I being able to sit down when we have an assistant on board and the three of us put our heads together and really looking at that, looking at our fleet, the overall inventory, various options for purchase, lease, whatever may be the case there to try to come at, the best way of looking not just at single vehicles, but the entire fleet. And the mayor and I had this conversation earlier this afternoon as well. I had kind of indicated, I think in our first budget meeting, that perhaps even set aside some money for future for kind of a sinking fund for equipment replacement if we map out what we think those needs are going to be. And in part, that fund balance over and above the required might be something we could look to for a portion of that to see a fund there.
And on the other side of that, we're already kind of looking at the deficit here. We are. Any update on the insurance? Is that going to stay about where you've got it projected?
We will. The insurance will, the plans that we are looking at, we have gone out to market. We've had one response, just the one.
As of Friday.
And it is as of Friday. Well, actually today, we got an email late this afternoon from Duane and Amor from me today. But we don't, that's higher than the Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But we've looked at some options internally and we actually communicated to employees in their pay staff last week that due to significant increases, we're looking at various options. And those options that we've looked at, the way Dan has structured those, would keep us within that 10% increase. It wouldn't be above that amount.
Yeah. And it could be less, at least what's it, meaning?
With some of the options that you're looking at.
So we've brought you the check you sent.
And dependent upon how, we're budgeting kind of for worst-case scenario. As we have, we've traditionally had one program or one insurance package. This provides three options for employees.
How much are we looking at?
And dependent upon where they choose, our costs, what we've budgeted for included is the worst-case scenario of the most cost to the city. If employees find, select other ways, we could see some reduction there. One thing I might notice, well, with regard to heritage, not spending it this year increases what we have in the fund balance. The fund balance went down because of the land purchase. And so that was, was this year. I have seen in some budgets where you budget for a transfer from your contingency or to pseudo-balance the budget. So, you know, I didn't want to do that. So, you know, I think there are ways that we could have played with that and I didn't want to do that. So.
That bid closes?
Closes on the?
10.
Yeah.
10-10.
And then I believe the park board is the 25th, 26th.
25th.
Yeah.
Yeah, 20. Going back to fleet and vehicles and equipment, I'd really like to see the hard review of, you know, the entire.
All rolling stock.
Departments have their mowers and.
And utilize, the best utilization, whether it's how that then is shared as well.
And so what I'm proposing is that we take a look at possibly removing some of those vehicles from the budget. And we look at, do that review. And if needed, you know, an amendment can be brought forth and we can review those at that time. I know that may increase the maintenance a little bit, but, you know, I think we really need to take a hard look at what we're buying versus what we're leasing and, you know, how many we have and how are we, how can we best use them.
In the general fund, we have one vehicle.
It's not, not.
Two vehicles, the police vehicle and then the second is for development, which is.
But that would be anticipated later in the year.
Right. Yeah. And, right. That's the vehicle right now with an employee deployed. We could look at how we could, could do those.
What's the, what's the shortfall of the transfer?
$144,000.
So that car isn't going to cover that?
No. I mean, the release was 44, the development vehicle I believe is 22,000.
And we didn't really.
And a new tractor for 80,000.
What's that?
That's not in the budget.
That's not in the budget. That was one that was requested, but we didn't include replacement of any equipment because we wanted to review them.
I know it doesn't cover it, but it would help because over the last year, we had several budget amendments come to us in different sessions and stuff. So you kind of have to anticipate that happening again.
I'm hopeful that that's not the case.
I know.
Because we try to budget in this way so that we don't have that. But I'm ashamed for you coming from on that. And remember, and I, we were balanced by 30,000 when we presented it.
I think it was closer to 60.
Okay. And so, that's right. And then, and so the two, the addition of the SRO and then the pilot program took us?
Basically zero. I think we were at a positive 4,000.
Which would make sense then, the, yeah.
64, 580. But, you know, as we look at setting our priorities, I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, my priority would be the second SRO over a newer vehicle.
Okay.
I agree with you.
So at this point, I'm here.
I'm agreeing with you.
Remove both of those two vehicles for now until after we perform the asset audit, if you will.
You need a motion or just general agreement?
General agreement's fine. We've got direction from you.
Okay.
The next item on the list, unless you guys have anything more before we move on, we still, it's kind of relevant. Now, we've included purchase costs of vehicles. We'll look at what we see at the time of purchase, but we'll take care of that when we bring that budget in towards you guys. The next item on the list is the playground surface at Spillway. We included in the budget a cost to resurface, which is basically to encapsulate over the existing surface at an estimate of $20,000. But we have received an option to repair the surface. Only those sections that are worn, we're looking at about $4,000. The repair, I need to know, would basically be cutting those sections out, filling them with new section that would not be the same color. Don't know how important the color would be versus what it looks like right now.
Can we match commercial?
Yeah, that's right.
So I've had one in the city.
And I guess.
City.
So that would be the next question, is do we leave the 20 in? And the budget that I resent out on Thursday still includes the 20. So that's our first question. Do we leave the 20 in or do we do something else?
Alderman Wilson, I think visits that part quite a bit, so.
I just have a question with cutting that out and just like inserting that in there. Would that be pretty smooth where that is cut out or would there still be more risk of tripping and?
No, it should line up on each side. They just use a different color because of how that's been sitting in the sun for 10 years. Trying to use the same color doesn't look worse. So they cut out circles or triangles or shapes.
And put in different colors. Animals or something like that. So, yeah. I was out there last week too. I was looking at several things. And the places where it's, where it's coming apart, something really does need to be done. But this, you know, it would be.
But if they could do it, it'd be fun.
A repair that could be done. Yeah, that would be fun. And.
Could we do it green?
It's already green.
It's already green.
So it needs to be.
It needs to be yellow.
Red.
Just a primary color.
Brick red.
Yeah.
Brick red.
So what's the shelf life of the other part of it? Or the expected life of the rest of it? Will we have to turn around and do 4,000 next year?
I don't think so. I don't think it'll be, I don't think it'll be 4,000 every year by any means. 10 years is a good life out of that. And putting a little money back in, so I think we definitely get five or six more years before we're going to do this again.
And definitely by repairing those pools, at least, you know, my expert opinion, looking at knowing all kinds of park stuff, is if you can repair those areas, I think that's how, that helps tremendously with that wear and tear.
And it shouldn't line up to be about, it's just going to look, just going to look.
Okay. But it can look, that was kind of my concern too. It's like, oh, just come in with different colors. But you can make.
Yeah, we did, we did a drop test and it didn't anyways as it should. So shaking, as far as that is, is not, not concerned.
But there are definitely some areas that need to be addressed because they are trip hazards. So, yeah. So we'll look at the 4,000.
Smithville Green.
No, that's still.
What color? That's red on the farm?
No.
Yellow, red.
Whatever. As long as they can do full shapes, the kids will like.
Shapes will like good. Even if they're, yeah.
Would you stay? Ever break?
Next.
The following item that you asked to get some detail on was, we have $7,500 budgeted for Remembrance Park across the street. That figure includes $2,500 for doing the irrigation system with our park's employees. We did look into outsourcing that and that would be 3,600. So we are talking the 2,500 to do it in-house. And then a flat 5,000 that will be determined kind of later, but just for mulch, flowers, plants, bushes, whatever the park board kind of decides. So that's, that's what we were thinking. Do you guys have any information on that?
Is this just the Remembrance Park, is the gazebo over there part of this whole thing too?
Yes.
So it's all of that. Because I'm looking at $5,000 with all the landscaping we do at home. And I'm thinking, you could do a lot.
Yeah, we're looking at tire washing the gazebo and possibly getting some buddy to help paint that as well. But the roses have that disease that makes them look awful. So we have to rip that out, get rid of the dirt.
Yeah, I went and looked the other day after.
And we might relocate those two pines. We've got a lot of, around the courtyard park sign, we've got a lot of the grass that we can divide and move up here that Denise likes. But it's something we're going to talk to the park board on, kind of dividing some of the existing plants, maybe some stuff. We've got a ton of mulch back here. We've got two pallets of it still, I think. So some of that stuff we have, it's just, now there's a water line over there that can put the irrigation in, get it, just clean up a little bit. Courtyard park's going to look nice.
Needs to be, yeah.
The following item is about the electrical and water upgrades in Smith's work. In the original budget two weeks ago, none of this is included in the budget right now, but we threw out $105,000 to complete the electrical upgrade and $85,000 or so to complete all the water upgrades. So Brett and I've got some more detailed information that we've provided here to you. 34 sites have already been upgraded. 10 of them are 50 amp only. The other 24 are 50, 30 amp. We could do 18 additional sites, which is the small panel that we talked about for $35,000. The large panel has 31 campsites on it, could be upgraded for just over $60,000. Or we can convert 10 of those 31 to 10 sites, leaving 21 on the larger panel to be upgraded for $41,000.
And the overlap on those 10 sites are, they need electrical and water upgrade, right? Is what we determined. That's why we were looking at, let those be 10.
Correct.
Because they're the most expensive to upgrade. They're kind of in the back. Is the price on the electrical to have an electrician coming to do it or is that staff doing it?
That's staff doing the bidding. That's what I did the last time. We gave the trenches and saved significant cost.
Okay.
So I'll just do that again.
I had a master electrician contact me today about some brush piles around the streets and he offered his services if we ever needed it for electrical work. So we might want to hit him up on some volunteer time if we can.
And what's the occupancy rates for those sites for the ones, the upgraded and non-upgraded?
The 50 amp sites are definitely more popular with the bigger rigs. You look at them now, there's almost more RV, you know, pushers than there is even 50 little trailers, you know, because of the 50 amp, the expanded capability. We'll know our occupancy at the end of this season, we'll track that this year as well. But the 50 amps are definitely the more popular sites. You'll see, I mean, you look at the side of the, the electrical is a good year of the first time.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, I, and I've got the week to eat. I mean, we haven't sold out this some, this year, except for Halloween, we're sold out for the truck retreat that weekend. Most of them are two nights. The 50 amp's definitely the preference.
Mm-hmm.
It's the bigger rigs.
I just, you know, are we, are we to the point where we need to make that upgrade or?
Wasn't there?
That state would help us.
I think, I think we are because the, yeah, like, we did have a fire one time. We had, we had one section go out right before 4th of July this year. And really, if it goes out, we can't rent them. It's lost revenue. So.
At that point, we'd have to replace them then if we had a fire?
Or, or shut those down.
We've been able to look care of at that time when that's happened. We've been able to, to do like, you're saying, you did a repair.
Yep.
Could we lose revenue during that time?
The last time we had to repair that, that 90.
Yeah.
It is definitely something we continue to deal with phases. Maybe give one panel at a time or something like that. That, that was kind of how we, we started with the 10 that we had, the 24.
So you have the information there on how much it costs for those sections as well as a map for what sites we're talking about. And the last note on the water is going, keeping 10 of those sites with, as 10 sites and only upgrading the water on the other 73 would take that $85,000 estimate to about 75, 76. So you have that figure as well. Again, none of, none of that we just talked about is included right now.
So are we looking at possibly putting the front panel in?
And when we're trenching, it's the same transfer water or electric, right? Or do they run side by side?
Two different decks.
Okay. But same general area or?
Not necessarily.
Okay. So my next question is what comes out?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I think it's back to those priorities. Yeah.
Yes.
What?
Staff, any recommendation?
Well, I think we had presented a budget that reflected the priorities that we had presented and it didn't include the funding for those, if that's something that the council wants.
One thing I do want to check against is the amount of expenses and capital improvements on Smith's work versus our revenues. So we stay even on that.
We've done that. We're okay.
We're okay with this budget.
Yeah. Yeah. And what they look at is end of the year.
Yeah.
So when we report it all. But yeah, given, it's basically the staff time is a significant portion in all the capital improvements.
I believe we use 20% of the staff time.
Yeah. But we've, we've checked that.
Against, because the, but the, our, the park revenue is over 100,000, right?
It's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Do we turn people away because we don't have enough 50 amp sites?
Yes.
Generally, yes. It's better now, plus 24. And the management issue, it's been kind of strange for him to sell out.
It's been really hot.
For the holidays. And fuel prices and heat weather, like we had.
Clay County is, one thing that improved Clay County is they do have online reservations, which we will have with the new site. And that force is also a two-day minimum, which we don't have right now. But they have had the same struggles. It's, it's been a drought year. People weren't camping as much.
So with that, any update on when the new site? So with that, any update on when the new site's going to be up?
The new reservation site, as part of the website, sorry, as part of the website. I have, I sat down last with Tony, I think it was the week that we had the budget meeting, provided some additional changes. We should have a mock-up from her within the next couple of weeks and then be able to move from there, so, this fall, yeah.
With that, then I'll throw out, since, since, you know, staff presented their priorities, this wasn't a part of it. I'd love to see the indices and numbers and see how often did we have to turn folks away, what was occupancy rate? You know, those data that I know gets tracked and then, you know, kind of same thing. If it's, if the numbers prove that this is something we need to look at, we can always review it as an amendment to the budget when we have the data to support it, right?
And are you guys okay with us putting those ten sites as ten on link and?
I think that's great, yeah, okay. I think we're seeing more folks who want to do that anyway, right?
Yep. There's five of us out there this weekend, for sure.
So we're picking a little bit up under the parks part of the budget with just doing the patching.
Yeah, so.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so. My math real quick is that negative one hundred and forty-four is now negative, just around sixty, sixty-two.
Just trying to see if there was anything else in parks that could go. Somebody's front, that panel could be repaired.
Damn municipal court. Those were April or May numbers?
That is removing, that is operating municipal court for six months, not operating municipal court for the other six. So, which I believe, I mean, I know we haven't voted in or anything like that yet, but I would, I would think that that's, that's pretty much the longest.
Yeah.
We would have to go, it could be a little.
Yeah, well, and, and we are anticipating bringing that to the board next week for first reading. And then second reading would be two weeks after that, which then by statute, the county has six months to, to take that over. So that's mid-October, November, December, March, April, and so that's, that reduces some, it would reduce that a bit.
Under finance, are those bank charges just monthly service charge fee?
That is our credit fees. So we have two, two and a half percent per transaction.
Hey Chief, just a question. On the cameras, is that the best deal you can find at seventy-five thousand on the cameras that you need?
That includes replacing all the car cameras, all the body cameras and everything. And that's probably, that's actually reduced the number of cameras, that's not going to assign one camera per officer, they're going to check them out. But actually, yes, the number of cameras we own and have to repair will be open then.
So is that the best price you can find for the quality? Okay.
If you want any more quality products.
That's why I said the best price for the quality.
Yeah, I mean, we can go with some, well, if, if we can do that, I would just say.
Oh, we gotta.
But, but no, I mean.
Yeah, and that, that reduces the number of body cameras at half, where each also has a slide and they'll actually check them out from those stations. If you do that, you cut down another, oops, sorry, another twenty, so we ran off of them.
One thing we have to be aware of on anything that's wireless also, there is a Homeland Security list now. Even DDRs you buy for security cameras for your house, they can easily be hacked, manipulated, whatever. And the cameras do wireless upload when we get back here, so we want to make sure that's nothing on that list. We could get them really cheap, but.
No, no, I don't want to go cheap, I would just.
Yeah, we've, we've done a lot for our security in this building with the internet upgrades, so.
One of the items Dan and I were just talking about as well, we have, and I don't know where the board is on this and I don't know our flexibility in the contract, because it existed before I came, but we have thirty thousand dollars included in here for the contract with Native Digital for economic development marketing. That would be one area we could explore.
I'd review it.
Pardon?
I'd review it, see if we can get rid of it.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's, and I, I know, you know, I don't know Steve, the, the goals of the EDC on that, but I think there are better ways to spend our ED money perhaps.
And we haven't seen a final product on them on the first bid, so.
Right.
I think we have a two-year contract with them.
Yep.
And so that would be, that's what we don't know, what, we could check on that, I don't know what we can.
The other thing is the Communities of Excellence, I don't think the budgeted number is not the number right we found out today.
Right, yeah, the budgeted number actually that we showed thirty-three forty in conversations with them, it's ten thousand is what, what it would be. So that's going in a different direction.
I think we need to find out what that is, because it was, wasn't it ten thousand for the county?
That's what my understanding was, that we had a.
Actually, if I understand it correctly, it's twenty thousand for participating entities, so ten thousand would be ours. I can confirm that with them, but ten thousand is what was quoted to me today as our part.
Yeah, let's find out, because I, I think the original agreement was ten thousand and maybe it was, the county was paying part of it, we were paying part of it, but. We gotta be willing to give ourselves, so looking at the elected officials' budget, what's the fourteen fifty for mobile communications? Is that iPads?
One thousand?
That's iPads.
That's two iPads.
Two?
And because we had eliminated most of those.
We already had everybody else's.
And, and are those two that we have, are those what we're using for, that, those are what we're using for recording and the like at this point?
But do those need to have?
No.
No, the only two left are Melissa and myself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, well, I believe, I think there is three.
Is that one?
I think it's that one.
Yeah, we can drop it off.
This one has service, I don't need service.
You don't have cell on it though? We dropped it.
Yes, it does.
Oh, we canceled it.
We canceled it, yeah.
Yeah, we canceled it.
So I don't use cell.
Okay, you can drop Melissa's too.
Drop Melissa's too.
Yep.
I don't use it.
You can drop mine too if you want.
And I know it exists, but it looks like it hasn't been used for the past several years, the two thousand for community relations allowance?
We've never separated it out into its own line. Now, do I think it's renewed? No.
Drop it.
I don't think we've actually identified it either.
I don't know what that's for, so.
I buy, I buy my own donuts for coffee with the mayor's, so.
Yeah, there's a.
We're each allowed to have community relations meetings to go to homeowners associations and buy coffee and donuts and talk like, kind of like the mayor's.
I pay for it myself, so, yeah, I don't need budget for it. So.
We can remove that two thousand. We're getting closer, folks.
Couple of questions I have with the parks budget. There's some incre, there's some significant increases on both the tools and supplies and then the rec league supplies and awards. What exactly are we increasing those?
I don't have the detail in front of me now. Rec league, supplies and awards, I believe we've included two new soccer goals. I would have, I can get you the full list on what that exactly is. I also know that last year we budgeted into a different line item for that and we moved that.
And, and you see some increases on some of that with increased participation.
Sure, sure.
Did we also deduct for uniforms that Emerald's going to pay for?
I don't, I mean, I did not.
I mean, it's, it's like, what, a thousand bucks, five hundred bucks, I don't know. But I mean, it's still a couple of dollars.
So we have a, basically a donor or sponsor?
Emerald Soccer Club's going to pay for the U-six, U-eight jerseys. We might have an increase in revenues too with the spring ride and the fall ride.
What was the other company you mentioned?
Well, I would see under tools and supplies, it was going up from a projected for this year of forty-four hundred to twelve thousand five hundred. So I was just curious about the increases.
Things like movie night, that doesn't expense, because we have a sponsor, so there's a revenue in those expenses.
Yeah, I, I saw it, it's under contracted, contractual services down a couple lines lower for the, the tools and supplies. That's, I was just curious why there was the jump.
Brett, do you know?
No, it's not, yeah. A lot of those rec line items, this year we added a couple. So that's trying to get those things for the ED, because we just have a lot of rec line items, so we're trying to identify those different expenses on. That's why we, what that is.
I can get that tomorrow morning, yes.
I'm overlooking in parks and rec, we may read it somewhere else on the repairs and maintenance to parks for thirty-five thousand. What's included in that? Because there was never anything before, so is it maintenance to the buildings?
I think.
I read it somewhere.
Well, isn't that when they, when you guys were pulling away or deviating everything from the admin account?
So that's where that one came in, never mind.
Yeah, they took it out administrative, put it under each one of them, so elected officials, we had to jump on that too.
So that's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Keeping this room at forty degrees for us.
It's got more around here, though.
I know.
A lot of heat going on here, right?
Online training and travel for elected officials. We expect that to go up higher than it's ever been. What do you suggest?
I think we just, I think.
Depends on how the April election turns out.
Because we're more than doubling it, so.
Yeah, I think we left it. I think what we had done is again, left kind of the outline for, you know, if everyone were to attend, so we can definitely riddle that down.
I know we do.
Riddle that down to.
Would the P and Z training fall under that or would it fall under something else?
Would what?
P and Z training and things like that. Does that fall under our elected officials?
When you say P and Z training, you mean?
The planning and zoning committee.
Whatever, guys, you know, we can do.
Yeah.
Oh, that's breaking that out, never mind.
It would be in here, that's coming out of the development, and so, yeah. So we could take that down to two thousand, then, yeah, it's a jack.
I think that's probably a good way to go.
Yep.
Go down to two?
On training? Yeah, like, none of us attended.
And I guess I'm not sure what advertising was.
Is that just a breakout from admin? Because we've never had it before, but what is it for us?
Which one?
Advertising.
Advertising.
Breakout from admin.
The board of election posting.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it has come out, yeah, yeah. So we're chomping at the mouth.
Same thing with membership and subscriptions, that's a breakout, I take it?
Yes, yes. I'm pretty sure of that. And like Dan and I were talking too, based on governing body direction, we have included fifty thousand for the strategic plan and thirteen-five for survey, I mean, those are numbers that could be reduced.
The.
Another suggestion I made, we're including the SRO at a hundred percent of cost. We haven't approached the school to see if they will any.
I, I, we need a budget for the full, if they decide to, then they decide to, we, I don't want to budget half, may not happen.
And I guess they're okay with us going ahead and doing that and providing that officer, I mean, to put in.
It was in their budget this year and they cut it, so they, they, from the discussions I've had with the board members I've talked to and the residents and our aldermen that have, that everyone would be more comfortable having a second SRO.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that everybody else signed it here, please.
Given where their budget was, they couldn't make it a priority.
Yeah.
As part of the strategic survey, since you brought it up, is it, is there no way to include an extra two, three questions? To basically combine the two into just the strategic survey on how the city's doing?
They're really two different things. One's the strategic plan, to kind of set those goals and priorities for the coming year. The survey informs that and helps us understand where we are in providing services that people want and, and really the services they're getting right now and the level of satisfaction with that is, is the way that that survey is going about. Now, I don't, that's based on Direction Finder numbers, I don't know if the National Civic League does a survey? That would be separate.
Olathe was just in the latest ICMA magazine with their Olathe performs, but.
And that's always, they always, because the ETC Institute is based out of Olathe and Olathe was one of the first to use ETC. And so that, that's typically, that creates their benchmark for performing, for looking at where they are.
And that's.
Which is, that's ETC, that's the Direction Finder, ETC is the Direction Finder.
And I thought of that too, but that's ultimately setting our baseline for our benchmarks going forward.
Do we want to, do we want to budget the survey and follow up with Patty and May to do kind of another board level retreat based on the submit, to look through the survey results and then figure out if we want to do the strategic plan this year or look at it for early next year?
My follow-up, I think that's the most important thing we'll do this year.
Okay.
I, we've got to do that.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think it helps, you all know where you're going, it helps us work with the community to determine those priorities and it helps staff in knowing where all of that is and where, and, and then to stick to that and focus where, where we see those priorities. And I think it would help this time next year with these decisions is, you know, what are we doing, what are we adding, what are we not?
So are we looking at doing the survey early January, February timeframe, or?
That would be my hope, and, and it would be great to be able to have survey information even to incorporate, because once we've got a budget adopted, I was going to get in contact with the National Civic League also on moving forward on, on a strategic planning process. And that is, and to be quite honest, from a staff perspective, thinking about National Civic League, doing a community visioning process versus the Communities of Excellence. In helping staff understand where priorities are, my preference would be the strategic planning process. Both are going to be time-intensive, because there's homework associated in their projects and there are ongoing calls with Communities of Excellence and there's ongoing work as, as the National Civic League process starts. You're having, you're engaging citizens and you're having ongoing meetings on, you know, a couple time a month basis and, and you're prepping for those. So there are two processes that would be really time-intensive and that's a concern that I had after Friday, speaking with them. I'd hate to commit ourselves again to Communities of Excellence and not be able to get where, where we'd like to go. Now, in my conversation with them, their points were, the Communities of Excellence process really helps identify and create that leadership basis for you that's needed in the strategic planning process. I could make an argument the other way, that strategic planning helps us develop those priorities, that then we can bring people on in the Communities of Excellence process.
So, so Dan, where are we at on the number?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't have very specifics about, you know, the eliminating of elected officials allowance and things like that. We are somewhere between negative fifty-five and negative sixty.
So.
In that area.
I'll just throw this out there and, and for discussion. I know Parks Department's had a position open for the last year, but hasn't. I know Parks Department's had a position open for the last year that hasn't been filled. I know it's tough to find those positions and we could probably keep it, you know, at least the seasonal's out there, but do we need to keep that position budgeted? We had it all last year and didn't fill it.
Could we do something like we talked with Chief last year? We had a police officer position and didn't, I think it was the SRO and felt like we probably wouldn't need that till halfway through the next budget year. Would that be possible with that vacancy of waiting?
Do a half, I mean, do a half year on it?
Current on that, is that about, would that be about ten thousand dollars, I think?
A half year?
Of a full-time, if the-
Of a, of a full-time or the seasonal?
I, I don't see us filling it over the winter.
I would say that a full year of that position and benefits is probably forty-five or so. So I've got twenty, I mean, that's what we have this year, we have it six months.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I really don't see you filling it before, before March. I mean, it's just going to be, in wintertime, you guys slow down too, so, yeah.
So do we have it budgeted for next year, full year?
It's a full year, so we can reduce that, so that would be considerably twenty thousand, I think, on that number.
And frankly, I think that would be my request going forward with stuff anyway, not, not that we need a hiring freeze, but-
We always look, always make a determination as to when and how, yeah, absolutely.
As, you know, particularly as, you know, the assistant comes on board and you start looking at who does what and, you know, really looking to shuffle the deck chairs, if you will. You know, I think holding off on hiring for non-essential stuff is probably not a bad idea. Probably gets us pretty close to where we need to be from that.
And does the SRO budget become ten months? I mean, Chief, are you going to be able to find somebody pretty quick on that, or? I mean, your process is two months usually anyway, right?
My hope is that we can fill that position internally and backfill the position on the road. Going out in the market to find SRO from outside, it's not that tough, it's a game where you don't know what you got. I would be much more comfortable placing a million, wanting to be in that position as a position.
Do you have-
You can just pick somebody that you're grabbing, or you're ready to ask.
Yeah, right, that's, okay. And I just know your process takes a long time to find an officer period, so.
Either way, I-
Do you think you have internal office?
If you're backfilling the position, is that, an internal officer in the league, we may not be putting somebody in the school until November, December, at the earliest. You push much past that and you're having a school year shot too versus weighing that versus fiscal years, school years, balance and all that stuff.
So we budget, so budget January through November or end of October with that?
Well, do you think you have someone internally who's with?
We have, we had candidates internally that were interested before, we talked about it before the school backed out. I was waiting to see how tonight, not before, started talking to my folks, because I don't want to get anybody wild or bring my folks up and then take a chair out from under the beginning. Not necessarily.
I saw you had one officer talking to some young kids today anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually Officer Morgan, he came from Kansas City.
Captain?
I don't think he's, I don't think he's, I don't think he's interested in the position, but he had a good time today.
He looked like he did a great job, so. Smile on his face and the little girl, so.
And I think that's one of the things that we're trying to do also in absence of an SRO, is ensuring that, that we've got that focus on, on that community outreach.
Yeah, yeah, part of that, part of that happening was because our one SRO was out of training yesterday and today. So we juggle that too, when she's out of business or whatever.
Well, if that can be hired internally, I think that would be great.
That's, that's the plan.
And then maybe hold as best we can on the other position until we truly need it.
The other police position?
Yeah, backfilling that one until we truly need it.
That is not the budget, that just subsists then. But if we budget this January through end of budget year, because probably wouldn't fill until January anyway.
Even the internal- He's got an internal candidate, right?
Yeah, but as you said, we might have one leaving.
The backfill would be January.
We might not bring him into the school until January because of that. Because that takes you out, that takes off eight grand.
I mean, this is the first time we've been full in the police department since I started, so.
We could, we could look at what that does, you know, and-
We figured out the schedule before that, so.
I, I figure if you budget it January till the end of the year, that drops another six, eight, six, seven thousand dollars out.
But I hope we could get an officer in there as quickly as we can.
Yep.
Right, so I think what you're saying, Alderman Blomker, is, is we go ahead with the SRO process, that that person, if it's an internal candidate, we move them over to SRO and we hold off, we push backfilling the other position, so we would have a few on the road, is, that's what I heard.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think Chief's just holding, pulling one, pulling one off the river right away, since we have one that may leave soon. That's what I heard it say, so.
One that may leave for the SRO position?
No.
One that may leave soon, are we still looking at that?
I'm sorry.
One that may leave soon? I don't think we have any that are looking at this point now.
Oh, you don't, you don't have anyone?
So what he was looking at is the one that he would lose for the SRO?
I do have one that's in the reserves that are made and being deployed, which is three to four months, I'm uncertain. It's kind of at that point now.
What we can do is look at all those, find out what things are.
Does it happen?
Yep.
Some of that can be informed by community, I think, too.
Understood.
Satisfaction with that.
Where are we at? Okay.
Around thirty.
That's better.
And I assume the workers' comp costs are all broken up from admin?
Yeah. And those are, those are hard to, we know with, it's a percentage of salaries, so.
Makes sense.
If we're looking at the thirty, we can look and we can get back to the board, the, looking at the native contract, I mean, that can help reduce them as well. I'm just, I'm not sure where we are with that, if we have that ability to be able to get out of it or not.
I don't know what, you know, you've got the COLA at one and a half and the merit doesn't hit till May.
Right, and that's how it's budgeted, those are budgeted in that way, yeah.
They're budgeted that way?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, I know. You're looking for the low hanging fruit right there.
We should have just got that park board in gear to get the heritage money spent, right?
And knowing that that's part of it, I'm a little bit more forgiving.
Yeah, I, I have a concern about going too deep in, into some of the stuff, just in knowing where we are and knowing that part of that is just created by timing here. And in reality, when you think about that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like Dan said, sixty thousand-
It's really two-ten.
Of, yeah, and they said two-ten, so, and so, you know.
I don't think we can get any more blood out of the turnout.
Oh, there's always more blood in the turnout.
Safely.
I guess one thing to look for direction from, from staff, you know, I, I don't know where we stand on, had we said, "Go ahead and eliminate the money," or get more information on Communities of Excellence program?
I think we've got to know what the real number is. My opinion on Communities of Excellence is it, it helps us as we start to put those puzzle pieces together to make sure that-
Well, and that's where I wondered if, if we do it now, you know, if we, because their years are the October year. You know, they have it ticked off with October. And I wondered if we do the survey and the strategic planning process and then next, this time next year, we'll be looking at Communities of Excellence. You know, they had some concern about that, but it just seemed to make more sense in my mind in that way. And I don't know if their concern is related to that we're doing it right or that they want someone in the program. I can get some additional information on that.
Yeah, I'll go with cutting Communities of Excellence as much as we can. My one question, it says that adds payment three of three?
That was for finalization of this year and they've basically kind of, we've hit the reset, so this would, so that three plus ten.
Yeah.
Then it's finalized this year and stay in that same cohort and-
But we, we're so, they, they weren't, they said we really need to hit the reset button because of where we were.
Is that ten for three years then?
It would be ten for two more years, it would be ten this year and ten next year, was the information that I got today.
I think that's getting a little bit more information, but, you know.
Because it looks like last time it was ten of three.
Almost every single time.
But we have now, we presented homework, we have it done, pardon?
I could kick a product out. Let's see what the number looks like and go from there.
That's my concern. I think we could, we could get something if we really needed to, but a ten K strand again is- Thirty-three looked okay, but ten.
I don't know how they can bump it up to ten, when the agreement, I think we agreed to is-
Because Gladstone is the other one, right, and they, they're not participating anymore?
Yeah, and they pulled out because they're kind of doing the same thing.
And Excelsior Springs is in, but they're-
Excelsior Springs is in and that's what, that's what they're doing and they're, you know, they're all in. And I, with their, I can talk to Molly and find out what they're spending.
Yeah, because that was my understanding, Alderman Blomker was, it was a three-way split type of deal or-
I just know the October trip is probably worth the three K spend.
Yeah.
For what can come out of that.
They have a three-day conference with the school board also, they're planning at the end of the month.
That being the point is that, working on that. So school board is working on their strategic plan. Theirs is a five-year strategic plan, really looking just at school stuff. Kind of redoing their existing, so they pull thirty stakeholders in from the community and part of it being their board and teachers and other things. So, you know, this fits nicely into all that, so.
Our students bring those thirty with other people and, and see community needs as a whole and make sure that people understand.
So Todd and I, we're going to go to the Fall Ridge Conference and kind of, kind of bring those two things together into more of a community. And so I think at thirty-three, it's worth the, worth the squeeze. At ten-
I, I will convey that to them.
I'd be happy to talk to Stephanie, the little one, or anyone else and share that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Where do we think we're at on the thirty thousand-ish deficit? Are we comfortable there? Do you want us to try to squeeze a little more when you bring it to your, for your team next, next year?
My two cents, because I'm never afraid to speak out, is with the strategic direction on, you know, hiring smartly and looking at fleet and other stuff, I think we're there. I think we've given strategic direction and priorities.
I would agree with that and just be very mindful of it.
Absolutely, you bet.
You're going to be.
You bet, yeah.
So then, just we'll jump on those last two.
Magic podium.
You have asked for some rental history on the senior center, so I've provided that. With the note that in sixteen, there were some services made to not rent it that year.
What's our rate on the senior center?
It is, wait, it is fifty dollars for four hours.
What's the rate on a shelter house?
I don't know.
Fifty dollars?
Fifty.
Fifty days.
So it's fifty for, for a four-hour block and then if you want additional hours, it's fifteen dollars an hour.
So if you had it for the eight, eight hours, you're talking a hundred and ten dollars.
And I believe that that number right now is eighteen, or the date we rented it twenty-six times. For about eighteen per dollar.
And what's our maintenance and cleaning on?
It is two hundred dollars a month, it'll be a few hundred dollars a month with the new contract.
With the new one?
With the, yeah, with the new contract.
If I remember correctly, that's part of the issue in sixteen, was when they came in and cleaned versus when you could rent it and-
Because they weren't cleaning every day.
And with the new contract, they clean it every Monday, Wednesday and Friday.
Who set the cost for rent?
It's in, it's in the schedule fees.
Our, our, where I'm at, our board, our clubhouse is seventy-five dollars for our rental.
Is it same size, is it kitchen?
It's a little smaller.
Little small, nice kitchen? That's, yeah, that's, fifty is, is pretty, shelter house is the same price pretty much. You're not going to sit in the shelter house all day, usually. If you're at a new birthday party in a senior center, the circumstances, because it's a kitchen versus shelter house, same price. We should just maybe, if we're going to keep it at fifty, maybe advertise it a little more or, or, you know, add that to our online reservations and all that stuff. Do we charge a deposit or anything?
There's a two hundred dollar deposit.
I thought there was.
There was a deposit on shelter house.
Yeah, I know. I paid that one.
I'll make a note of that, maybe looking at increasing that.
Yeah, why don't you make a staff recommendation on that?
One thing I would say is that fifty dollar rate, I think there's probably an, an expectation. There's, there's not a lot of flexibility in utilization of the community, of the senior center. So that fifty dollars, you're, you're getting limited use of the building.
Yes.
So I, I think that is probably a very logical reason for why it's lower rental.
Don't move the tables, don't move the chairs.
Don't use the ice maker.
Don't use the ice maker.
Don't touch the dishwasher.
Don't touch.
Don't touch, yeah.
Don't move the copying rooms.
So not, and that's, that's fine, but it, it makes it less flexible for use as it is a senior center, not a community center.
Yep.
And so community center rentals will be higher.
Well, in a good news perspective, an event center will be coming online soon, which will probably be easier to work with.
There we go.
And that would mean sales?
Yeah, increase revenue. That are about modeled by increase.
Which helps that deficit to.
That's one question I did have, based on our-
We continue to be conservative, but we think realistic and, and Dan and I are both, I think, hesitant in some areas. We've gone back and forth on a lot of the revenues. I think we're still relatively conservative, but we try to, so I think we could see some, some increases there. I think we both feel very confident that we'll hit those numbers. And next year, in projecting those revenues, we'll have that better history of he and I working together and monitoring that and both of us having a better understanding there. Dan?
Yes, and maybe next year we'll have additional fuel tax, if that passes.
Maybe a little more Parks and Rec revenue off some events.
The other thing that we've not talked about also is nothing is included in here on Road District.
Yeah.
And moving forward on that, you know, because we really couldn't do anything before probably an April election there either, and that would be set by the county, but that would be additional revenue as well. Now, it would have minimal impact on next year's budget, but it would affect going forward as well, that ability to-
So I know it only covers half of the remaining deficit, but does this include the expected sales tax from online sales? For example, Mayor Bully's Amazon habit?
No, my Amazon habit, I always collect sales tax, I try to make sure I don't buy from third-party resellers. It's all the other online people I buy from.
No, there's no specific adjustment made in here for that.
And we expect a little bit of a bump, right?
I anticipate a decent bump.
And one other thing that we didn't mention, I know that we've had the conversation, maybe have an idea of where that, this, what I'm about to say would be earmarked for, but the fee might be-
Exactly, I thought that, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we've talked about, that would be about four hundred and ten thousand, is what we're estimating.
Four hundred and sixteen, I believe.
Four hundred and sixteen thousand. You know, so that reimburses part of the two fifty we have, or it, it gets us back to a number that's in that, in that amount, so. And whether, you know, that's earmarked as we move forward for how we would use the land or something else in here. It just made sense to say, you know, this, there's kind of a tie here to being able to, there would at least be some funds available and we wouldn't have to push to find ways to be able to fund what we might look at. But in all honesty, given other things that are going on through the budget, how we get through a timeline, that may not be a spin that happens this year either, so. And part of that, I think, provides flexibility as we discuss community priorities as well. And that's where the importance of that discussion really comes in, is knowing what it is that the community would like to see happen next.
So with these adjustments too, it lowers our reserve.
Correct.
So overall, total, yeah.
That we were talking about.
Overall total, even the thirty might put us in the positive, because we have to adjust the, the reserve.
Right, so we, in fact, you're, you're exactly right. So we would be down to a hundred and four thousand, which would be an additional forty thousand in reserve, so we should be in the top.
We should close it out.
So I think we're there, we're ten in the positive.
Yes.
Uh, what is that?
That's fine.
But now you got one more thing we're talking about.
It'll lower.
It'll lower.
Correct.
Yeah, it'll, it'll take care of the top number.
Yes. Yeah, you're right.
Ceiling is a different button.
That's the, the road.
That's, that's transportation.
Right. And then we were, we're good on that, I think, if we looked at it right.
Yes, we're, yeah, we, we can afford those options.
So, so.
They haven't presented yet, though, right?
We have not presented.
We're still, we're still in general. We're still in general.
We, we fall asleep during that and we, we make the decision. If, if that works on general fund, then we can move forward to that.
Move forward.
Transportation sales tax. Um, you guys asked for a quote on ceiling the downtown streets and then also commercial all the way to B two one sixty-nine. So this is transportation sales tax money. Will have, or it has about three hundred and forty thousand cash balance. There's no required reserve. Uh, revenues and expenditures are about equal as they sit for, for two thousand and nineteen right now. So any of this money would eat into, if we wanted to do either of these projects, it would eat into that three hundred and forty thousand dollar cash balance. So ceiling Meadow, 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 Mill Church and Commercial just to West Summit, fifty-two thousand. And then if we took Commercial all the way, the rest of the way to one sixty-nine, an additional fifty-eight thousand.
Jack's not here, but, and I don't see Alan either, but I'm going to guess that if we do that, and then we put in the new roundabout by the school in a year or two, whenever that's projected, they would have to match it, right?
Right.
I'm good there.
One thing, I'm fine with that, but in talking, um, on the shape, Commercial is in, on the repair work that was done with the, from the gas company, I think we need to look at raising our standard. When those are replaced, cause I asked, okay, when, you know, it was, the comment was made, it met standards. I'm thinking we need to raise our standards because of the shape that that's in. And I don't know what that means, but.
Especially in the spots where they went two foot from the curb and it's just got a strip, like that's, I mean, put the extra two feet in, put the little effort in. And, and I get it, they're meeting what our current coordinates and rules are. Good, yeah.
And we can, that's something that this fall we can put together, fall, winter.
I would just, yeah, somehow put the wording where it's curb to curb and.
We'll bring forward those standards as a whole because it'd be, I think, more than just
Yeah.
that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll add that to our.
Just the market.
Now for clarification on that, am I not putting in, including just the fifty-two for downtown?
I think, I think the whole hundred and ten.
I think just do it all.
Yeah.
Do it.
Make it look, make it look good all the way out, make it match the street skate.
And then, and then the, the ongoing review would be our bringing revised standards.
I just wanna make sure.
And we've got a Smith-Villion who is, uh, one of Garnie's head of, uh, pipes, that he has to go out and do this in a whole bunch of communities. Unfortunately, they don't really do work in Missouri. But he's offered to share his knowledge and what they end up having to do a lot because they would have had to, had to completely replace and make, make both new and not.
So that fifty-five thousand would have been on the contractor game. Yeah. And their price probably would have been different because of our prevailing way to crime is everything else.
Anything else for me?
No.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate that.
I think we need a quick recess before next pro.
Knock it out.
All right. Next up is the NLC Service Line Warranty Program presentation. I hope you're wide, wide awake, but I hope you've enjoyed our budget discussion.
I did visit the water fountain two times. And thankfully, it's very cold water and I started.
Did it taste good?
It tastes excellent.
There you go, buddy. This is a guy who travels to many municipalities and probably drinks a lot of water.
Maybe we need to put a porter machine there.
Put a parking meter in there just during council or meeting. Uh, okay. So, um, thank you very much for inviting me. Um, I'm Lee Zell, and I am, uh, here with the National League of Cities Service Line Program. And so I came to visit so that I can walk you through what the program is, what it's about, how it works, and if you would like it to be available to your residents. I'm here first of all to give you a little bit of an idea of what the National League of Cities is. I don't know if any of you have ever worked with the National League of Cities. The National League of Cities is your national version of your Missouri State League Conference, uh, Missouri Municipal League Conference. We work on a national level basically to walk through public policy issues with cities so that if you find yourself trying to figure out a particular issue and it's not coming to you, we can come in and explain to you how other highly successful cities will address that particular issue that you're working on. So in this case, um, the National League of Cities, we every year probably get thirty priority, uh, issues that cities sort of direct us to. And right now, number three on that list, and it's been rising every year, so this year is number three, is, uh, aging infrastructure, specifically water and sewer infrastructure. So, like many other cities across the nation, basically water and sewer infrastructure is very expensive. Cities talk about it a lot right now. And unfortunately, every year, they talk about it a little bit more because the, the amount of money that they see themselves having to spend to try and keep up with maintenance of the water and sewer infrastructure is growing. And as it does, it sort of concerns cities because the numbers are getting out of, out of reach. And so what this program is all about is understanding, first of all, this is a national issue. So it's not just your city. Um, at the same time, water and sewer infrastructure within most cities, um, cities will tell us they're, they have a plan, they got it, they're under control, they have a one-year, a five-year, ten-year plan. And everything that we talk to cities about inevitably is communicated back to us as within the right of way. So the reason we've come to visit with cities on this is because when we look at the water and sewer infrastructure problems, uh, we look at it a little differently, but I think it's a perspective that most cities realize makes a lot of sense. And that is, we look at the water and sewer infrastructure in a city as the footprint of your city, not the right of way. And the reason that's important is because as cities are focused on what they need to do to improve that water system, that sewer system, what we show them is that's the arteries of your city. However, the capillaries that you feed your water out to and then your sewer, uh, return on the sewer line, return back to, they're feeding out to your residents' properties. And much of every city's year and week and months are communications on a daily basis sometime where you might have a hundred calls from residents during a month. And during that month, they're calling you, there's water out here, I don't know where it's come from. And we always respond to every single one of those to go find out what's up. But the, the, the statistics that we have are, it's, it's about ninety-three out of a hundred of those responses that you make, you find out that this is not something within the right of way. And so there's a conversation that goes on with your residents and it's uncomfortable, but it's reality. And that is, uh, to paraphrase Ms. Davis, unfortunately, this is something that we've identified outside of the right of way. This is something you're gonna have to deal with on your own. That conversation circles back to mentioning she's going to communicate with the contractor. And when she does, she finds out this is a very expensive part of her responsibility. And so where I visit often is cities that tell me, we have residents standing here before us and they're saying, I don't have anywhere else to turn. I spoke to my council member and I don't know what to say. Um, I, I, I'm hoping you can make an exception to somehow help me. And so cities have come to us and said, we realize that it's outside of our responsibility, but at the same time, we also hear our resident because they're our neighbor. And I was elected by them, and if not me, it would have been them sitting in this seat. So I do want to pay attention to what they're telling me. So what the National League of Cities has done is we listened to the cities and they said, can you help us with this? So the program that we put together specifically is so that you can help your residents before they are faced with that particular issue. It's right now, it's an emergency and they're on the phone, um, with the city. And instead you put together a program, which is what the National League of Cities has done. And what this program does is it basically says, okay, first of all, this program is no cost to your city, so it won't be affecting the budget, not in a negative way. The other thing is, is we don't use your city tax dollars. This program is a voluntary program for any resident, but no resident is required to participate. So what you're doing is saying, I'm gonna inform you, I'm gonna give you information about options, and then I'm gonna hand it off to you as a resident, so you decide what's best for you. Um, and what the program does is, it's going strictly through a letter, and that's the only form of communication this program uses. So through a letter, it's going to send out just to your city residents with your permission, that's why we work with you here. And it's gonna communicate, and it's gonna say nationally, this is an aging infrastructure, water and sewer is a national issue. So it's not your city's mismanagement or something. This is something that's national. Locally, your city is handling this in this way, and they have a good hold on it. However, they want you to know that they do get the calls and you might never realize this, but they, the city does receive calls from residents asking about this issue. And unfortunately, it's at that moment when it's already occurred. So it's sort of hard to prepare after it's already happening right now. Because of this, and because we realize many of our residents are not prepared for this, they're also not aware of their responsibility, which is part of our public policy, beyond the water meter, beyond the tap on the main, the sewer main itself, leading up to your own home. That is yours. That is your responsibility. And because we understand this is occurring frequently, we want to communicate what you know, you can either choose to set aside savings to be ready for this, you can come up with, uh, alternate solutions, or we have found a program available from the National League of Cities, which any of our residents can voluntarily choose to review and use themselves. And at that point, the citizen has the opportunity to say, this letter is not for me. Or they can say, you know what, this is, this is probably the only thing that's gonna help me because I'm really concerned that this kind of thing is gonna be significantly out of my budget range.
If I can interrupt for one second also, I'm sorry. Um, he's talked about a letter, and I don't know, you guys may have received kind of cold call type letters of, of things like this in the past. One of the things about this program in particular is that letter is a joint letter. We let our residents know this is something the city sponsors, this is a credible source, to give that credibility there. Um, and I know, I don't know if you all know, but we and I worked together some in Grandview when they entered into the program, and we tailored that letter very specifically toward Grandview residents. And I think that's an important factor here so that it's not just more male people are getting, it has a credibility that the city says, hey, this is something we know is important. So sorry to interrupt.
No, it's fine. So the way we communicate is strictly the letter as you mentioned. Um, when we partner with the city, we do that because we're doing this for you with your oversight and with your absolute authority. We, we want you to have this. We want your, you to have the ability to say, this program is working exactly as we wish. Continue. Or every time we communicate, not just this moment, but as you mentioned, every time we communicate one of these letters, which is three times a year, spring, fall and winter, before we send that actual out, we would actually communicate as an example with your administrator and say, we're about to send this. And it's just like the last one you saw, probably says the word water instead of sewer or in home, according to what that is. But that's not it. Would you like us to proceed? And they say, yes, go right ahead. At any time along that path, if there's something, some concern, if quite frankly, if you have a resident that you want me to pay attention to, not that we don't, but I'm just saying there's always that kind of situation that comes up. It's yet opportunity for you to say, hey, we need some more definition on this. We have three new members on our board. They, they're not up to date. Could you come in and talk to us a little more, bring them up to speed? Cause that actually does happen. Um, then we do that. And we do this because when we communicate to your residents, the number one question they will ask when this letter goes out is they will sometimes touch base with the city to go, is this real? That's the question. The reason we partner with the city also is we want them to see that we are here working with you to be responsible, to work with you as a partner, so that they understand this is with cities' understanding of what we're doing. Some cities will ask us, they'll say, well, you can just do this on your own. Why do you ask us? And that's the very key difference in the National League of Cities program, and that is, we're not interested in marketing something. We're here to assist the city, assist your residents to raise the quality of life in your community through a program that very specifically is set up so that it helps your least people, the low-income, fixed-income seniors. Every one of us. Eighty-three percent of the residents in this country tell us that if they have a thousand-dollar emergency, they don't have a thousand dollars. So it's a pretty low threshold when you understand that a lot of these repairs are five, six, eight thousand-dollar repairs. So that's what it's all about. Um, to support your community, so you understand that this program is a partnership in your community. So all the repairs that are done, use your local licensed businesses. They're doing all the work. We're not trying to take their work. This is to help the resident who says, I can't afford it. So we take care of that for them. We literally employ those local contractors to arrive at Ms. Williams' house immediately so that that repair is done, so that she's not searching in vain to try and find the right person while water's spilling out into the street. Instead, that contractor is right away out there. So, any questions so far?
So Cynthia, how'd it go in Grandview? What?
You know, it went well. And I'll be quite honest, I was a little skeptical at first. I think we probably saw it in the first meeting. Um, it's something that the board brought to us and, and we started looking at. And it was very successful. I'm not sure how many claims you all actually had.
I, I don't have that listed.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, Grandview joined right before the significant rain events last spring. It had pretty significant impact, but we didn't have calls as a city with, with backup issues. So that was, that was a win in our book from that perspective.
I can help you a little bit. I don't have the numbers. I can quote Kansas City numbers. We've had it for more than five years. But I can tell you that at your state league conference, we happened to invite some of your cities in the state that have had the program for three to five years so that they enactively said, we think we're doing well, but we also know that we want your feedback. What are we doing and what can we do better? And it was a great meeting because we had cities like Pine Lawn, which is a very near city, St. Louis, small city. We had cities like Town and Country, very well-to-do city that's a partner. We had cities like Sunset Hills, which has been doing this for quite a while. We had cities like Pleasant Hills. Grandview was there and, um, I can tell you that apparently Grandview is exceptionally pleased because the mayor was looking for people to share their enthusiasm about the program. They have been very successful. their enthusiasm about the program, they have been very successful. Odessa is a, is a partner city, as I mentioned, Kansas City has been for more than five years. To give you a, and I, Kansas City's big, so, but I'll give you this, because I do a report for them every year, and I'm welcome to come and do a report for you, that's what I would do each year, I just ask that you invite me. And basically what I do is, for them, they have had over seventy thousand households participate in the program. So you have a perspective of, who's going to join this in our city? Well, here's the expectations, and this is national numbers. You should expect ten percent of that number of households, total number of households in your city, to immediately sign up the first year. The second year, another ten percent, and the third year, another ten, so about thirty percent over three years. After that, what happens is, that thirty percent rolls, and what I mean by that, and it's very evident in Kansas City, Kansas City actually has about fifteen thousand households a year in this program. And as we continue through the program, and the whole goal of the program is to fix something that you're afraid security gets, and every year, members of that fifteen thousand have something great, we come in, we fix it, they call us, because this is a month-to-month program, and they say, well, it's all brand-new now, I think I should cancel it, you can do that. So this is a month-to-month, they can use it, and then cancel when they have a claim that's resolved, and that's what they want. At the same time, your neighbors are the ones that say, I saw them come out and do all that, so is it still no costs, no deductible, no one-time fee kind of stuff, they had to pay extra, no, they took care of it. So the way the program works is, your residents choose, they make the voluntary decision to say, I want help with my water line, or I want help with my sewer line, or I want help with my interior water and sewer both. They can pick what they want, the water line is five dollars and seventy-five cents each month that they want to use it. They can use it one month at a time, or as long as they wish. Sewer is seven dollars and seventy-five cents per month. Interior water and sewer both is nine dollars and ninety-nine cents a month. These are set up so there is unlimited number of incidents that we cover. So if you have three problems a year, that's just fine, we didn't hit some artificial cap. If you have four hundred times that we come out, we would still say, that's just fine, because there's no number of limits, limit on the number of claims that you can make. I bring that up only because interior plumbing is one of the ones that has that kind of call claims sometime, and usually in tenant properties, and it's usually because somebody's sticking rubber duckies and toilet, tennis balls and such down the drain, but we cover that stuff. So that's the kind of thing. I say that also, also though, because if you have properties that are tenant properties that are owned and rented, this program is extremely interesting to the tenants and to the property owners, because they're like, wait a minute, I get a call thirty times a day from my tenant when they clog their drains, and they're calling the owner, and sometimes the owners don't live here, they may live in Chicago or LA, but they have a number of properties. This program allows them to pay and allow their tenant to call us all the time, not them, so they get fat service. The way the program works is, when they make a call, within a maximum of one hour, we have them respond to, we, we take your call, but then we have them in touch with the local plumber in an hour maximum, and right now it's about thirty-one minutes, it's our actual reality in time. So they get a quick response.
One second. Bob, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering, community of our size, how many contact do we put in your?
I'll reverse that a little bit, so how many households are in your community here?
We have thirty-six hundred today.
Okay. So we have, we, we have contractor services that we, our internal, and they work with your contractors in this area, and we, we basically, if your city says, we would like to do this, then we contact them and say, we would like all of you to participate, and here's, here's what you should expect. And so the contractors will talk to us and say, I'd like to be in that program. And based on your city's size, we will determine the right number to match. I couldn't tell you myself, like it's twelve or it's thirty-six, it, it varies by more than just the size of the, the city that we're servicing, but we, we match it according to the need. Now, you do know that you're really close to other cities that I already mentioned, so most likely, you will have some contractors that will cover, like the county. And so in that area, you may have some overlap with some other areas, and that would allow you, in emergency situations, to have greater need. I bring that up because this program is not only to here to help your residents with a water line break, or sewer line break, or collapse, or stoppage, or tree roots, but you got assistance through a pretty tough winter, and you had a lot of very, very low temperatures, and so this program is the only program out there that actually covers thawing of your frozen water lines. So when your resident says, my water's not working, but there's some, the pipes seem to be broken, this program sends the plumber and says, there is technology to thaw the line, and oftentimes that means saving the lines, but we get water service back. So those are the kind of things that were, that are part of the program. So, the other thing, since you were speaking of budget, is, this program from the National League of Cities is not just about one issue, it's about the entire issue. So one of the aspects that National League of Cities is trying to deal with, there's about twelve facets that this program deals with. But one of them is also the reality that cities all across the United States tell us, you know, this, one of the side effects from these water issues is that when a resident calls and says there's a problem, usually sixty to ninety days later, they show up again at a utility window, saying, hey, I guess it's hundred thousand gallon water, but isn't there something you can do about this, this is huge? And some cities can help, and some cannot, some have a plan. So what we do is, this program returns to your city fifty cents per each month that a program is used voluntarily by your resident. So if a resident says, I'll use the water program, the water line program, and then each month they voluntarily use that, fifty cents is returned back to your city. Same thing for sewer, another fifty cents, same thing for in-home, another fifty cents. The purpose there is because we're trying to help you have the non-tax revenue resource pool to now, you decide, we don't decide for you, but for you to now say, we have a water service program that will self-fund our city's ability to allow for a certain level of forgiveness of a water bill, or assistance for certain issues. That's up to you, it's, it's, it's our part of what we're trying to do, is pay attention to what the effects of these aging infrastructure issues, and also the side effects of them as well. So, any questions on that?
So about twenty-three forty-nine for all three services combined, somewhere there about. Can I sign up on behalf of the city? What, what was our average repair when we went through the water bill adjustments this past spring? I mean, three thousand is pretty, three thousand, four thousand dollars?
One was. Repair, average repair.
Two sewer lines down the street, and each one of the customers paid about a thousand dollars a piece, and they didn't even go all the way to the main.
How, how many locates do you do a year, or service calls do you guys do a year that are determined to be resident-side? How many people call you guys and you go out?
About ninety.
Yeah.
So.
I think you shared, a lot of those were downtown, right?
Well, that was.
Right now.
But that was the week when we talked about the infrastructure. Ninety percent of our work orders are all first to fill, somebody left a dog in the zone, somebody left the sink running, they, they turned their sprinkler on, why we used to use it. So we had to go out there and explain to them, you know, the water was very major, you got a leak in your sprinkler, you've got a leak on your line, you've got running toilets, and ninety percent of the time, more than ninety, it's on the prison.
Sure. We, we actually just went through a water department review and learned a lot of the good information on our infrastructure.
So since you have a water department representative here, I'm just going to mention one other area, because I'm certain that you could give us guidance on that. In every city, that's some, every city I visit, I ask them, it's good we have no windows per se, I go to a city and I ask them, I say, in your city, and I, over there, that part of your city, that twenty percent of your city over there, is where you spend eighty percent of your water and sewer repair budget.
Central portion of town are here.
Same, same concept, so.
That's why.
Well, it's not over there, but it's here, or, but there's always an area of the city, here's what this program will do, which, when I ask that question typically, I ask the follow-up question is, so in the last year, three years, five years, ten years, twenty years, you've been spending that kind of resources in that area down there?
You've been here thirty, right?
Twenty.
Twenty? So the last twenty years, it's all been down here, right?
Exactly.
There you go. So, so in twenty years, you put a lot of residue into an area and it hasn't healed it, and here's what I will tell you, and I will tell you right now, and you will, you can invite me back in about a year and a half, and I'll bring you a map. And what I'm going to show you with that map is, voluntarily, not with your money, voluntarily, this program will be put out, and then when it's used, the first year, that first ten percent will be in the area that he's spent all his time and money.
Oh, yeah.
And what's going, and that's because when those people see this, these people, this is experience telling you, these people in that area are like, oh my goodness, I've been going out in my, my side yard, digging a hole best I could, going to the hardware store, band-aiding this problem together for years, and it's never right, and it doesn't last very long. And so finally, you're telling me that for five seventy-five or seven seventy-five, depending on what's our water sewer, you're going to send the good plumber to actually come fix it. Our program guarantees, whatever plumber comes, that we guarantee their work for another year after they finish, even if they go out of business. We still do that, and we would send another plumber by the way, if something like that occurred. So they're like, sure, I'll send up, and they're the people that really do. Six, seven months, now breaks as they knew it would, we come out and boom, we take care of it, we're done, they're like, nothing, I've tried it, no, no other. So they, their neighbor says, I'm in this neighborhood, I've watched these break stoppings throughout my neighborhood, I know it's my, our time, our neighborhood is past the point, so it's just time that's coming till it comes to me. So what this program is doing, and more specifically for your water system, is, when you send nice clean water into these barrels, it returns as not so clean. So the part of the system that's really causing trouble for the cities is, when it leaves, it's going through a, sometimes forty, sixty, eighty, or it, just now in, in downtown Kansas City, we did a hundred and six-year-old line, and it's, it literally looks like a, just a shard of clay, and various materials, and it's washing into your sewer main, which you might spend a lot of, I call it rotar-ruddering out, to keep the flow of your own sewer mains working, so we don't have overflow beds, so you don't have visits from the famous EPA people. And so you're doing a great job of managing it right of way. This program is going to voluntarily allow the city to heal the lateral connections that are private, so that they aren't just feeding a debris field into your system that creates a faster and faster service time period for you, because just like sweeping the sand away at the beach, you, you're in a losing situation, it's, let me get that. So.
Just to begin for a moment.
Yes.
Outside of downtown, our average age or subdivisions are fourteen point eight years, give or take, back in math and math. We've got one subdivision that's about forty-eight years old, and we've got nine that are in our twenties now.
Yep.
So I think we all know where this can probably most benefit, since it is a voluntary like the program, I strongly recommend we go forward with it.
Absolutely.
You said it's fifty, is it fifty cents for each product that they would buy or service, so it'd be a dollar fifty a month?
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll be very, I'd like to be very clear, so that'll help, be helpful for you. So if someone said, I want all of them, they have water, sewer, and in-home, that's a dollar fifty total per each month they have that, that we return to the city. If they choose one, it's fifty cents. If someone else chooses two, it's a dollar total. You accrue it month, you accrue it monthly, we get, we send it to you at the end of each year in January, you get a very thorough report of exactly how many households, we had three hundred and ninety-six households sign up, we had forty-seven water line replacements, we had a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in repairs done, and I'm going to give you numbers, because I think you would appreciate it. November tenth, twenty sixteen, I did that, that report, city of Kansas City had sixty-three hundred repairs, over seventy thousand households that were participating for six point three million dollars that we spent there. And we had, because back then, everybody asked, you deny a lot of people, don't you? In that time, we had one denial. The program is not set up to deny, I will tell you that, it's real, and I very much appreciate that you're here, because Grandview is a great place to ask, and that is, when your residents get this letter, they're going to call and go, how do I identify qualify? Real question, you turn on the water, does the water come out? Yes, then your water line qualifies, because it means it flows, okay? If you run, have a, my sewer line qualifies. If you run water in the sink, the shower, the tub, flush the toilet, does the water flow away? Yes, then your sewer line qualifies. Okay, that's real, and the reason I'm, I'm actually proud of that, because I, I press us very hard in terms of this, none of you, and none of your residents, unless you're a plumber, or have knowledge like this gentleman, none of you are, are going to have any clue what's underneath the ground in your yard, or what, what it looks like, or it's like it's been like. So we don't expect you to know anything. Quite frankly, it costs too much to determine what the condition is. So the way this program works, when you sign up, and this only started a year, yeah, a year ago, when you sign up, we tell you, we say, you're signing up today, it goes into effect thirty days from today. So that took away, there used to be this, and everybody's like, it's too good to be true, it's got to be in it, because it used to go into effect literally the next night at midnight. So, but that's how it works. We do not make any, we are already aware that there is wooden sewer lines in this country, and we do cover that, we can, we do. In your city, there is galvanized cast iron, orange mud, which is almost like paper mache with tar, blue powder, which has been recalled, and now we're still taking care of it. So I mean that so that you understand, when residents call, we're not going to get there, they call and go, oh, look, we can't help you, you have that. So that's just so you're, you're aware. Last detail, and this leaves you a little homework, if you wish, we helped in Flint, Michigan, and that is, string lead lines. If you would like us to, we will help you with lead lines, we will replace them. If you would like us to do that in your city, I'm not saying you have lead lines here, because most cities aren't sure about that, but if you do, we ask the city, in your review of your building code, please update your code so that it says, if a lead line, exterior water line, is found to be lead, it must be replaced, not. water line, is found to be lead, it must be replaced, not repaired." If you will do that, we will replace from the meter to the house on every single house that we find lead when we have, when there's a problem. We will, we will, we will insist, our contractors will do it because we're paying them, but they will go, "Okay, it's lead, got to replace it." We just need your assistance on that one factor. So we're willing to do that, we just need your assistance. So.
You mentioned apartment buildings, what about commercial properties?
Currently, we are not able to, we've tried, we, that's probably coming, we've tried it, and it, we got it a little bit in, and then we found limitations. If we do it, because I know we're working on that, it will be small and medium-sized. I can tell you right off the bat, the ones that are going to fly right away are going to be the, what you and I would think of as a residential-type property that has a Realtor, doctor, lawyer, kind of, that's not a problem. We will not be getting into the grease trap restaurant, that, that's not our, we can't do that. So that's how it works. Any other questions? So to just wrap up, all we need is your permission. We have shared with your city a simple resolution, and the resolution could be as simple as if one of you said, "I would like to make a motion to ask our city to enter into an agreement to communicate the National League of Cities Service Line Program to our residents at no cost to the city, using no city tax dollars, as a voluntary program for all residents with no requirement for any residents to participate, all in favor of say on." That's.
So moved.
And if you make that vote, then your mayor typically decides the agreement to tell us to communicate it, and that's what we do. And that's how, that's it.
Cynthia, do we need to put this on the agenda, or are we good to just do it?
I would, I would recommend that we take it to the agenda as a resolution, that you all can authorize. The other thing that I would recommend, and this is kind of taken out of the Grand View playbook there, that I work with them on ensuring that letters kind of tailored to, you can go through, review it, I think.
No, not in any way.
The letter that you all used from Grand View was great, but be able to go through that process, because one of the things, if I recall from the process, would, they'll need, there'll be a significant amount of communication between us and them. If I remember correctly, we talked about the plumbers in the local area, so you can have that information, but then also ensuring that our staff and other folks who get calls with regard to water and sewer issues know that this program's out there, they can be informed of that. So just kind of formalize that process so that we continue kind of repeating, so that if there's coverage of it in the paper, or wherever that, that we've, we've got that information, so it's a formal process.
Since Grand View adopted the program, we continually are doing things to improve the method, and so now the process is, we, of course, already communicate the letter and so forth through staff to say, "This is what we're working with, staff gives us their feedback." The other thing, though, is, is we offer, and we're careful, because we are not here to take over your staff's time with, like, you're going to get phone calls. That's, we don't want that to happen. Sometimes it does, so they'll get a few calls. But our goal is, we will, as part of that, we call it onboarding process, is we touch base with your staff on short training to just help them do the, the most frequent Q&amp;As that they'll get. Is it real? That's number one. How do I participate? And they can share with them and direct them to the website, which you might choose to say, "Let's just put it on the one or portion of our website, saying, 'Here's the program, it is voluntary,'" and then let residents just go look at it. That way they're not spending their time, but they can do that. And we try and make it so that staff has enough knowledge, but we really are trying not to take staff time. We want to let them say, "Here's what I can help you with," and then here, give them a call, and that way we get it out of y'all's hands, because we do not want to tie up their time, because we know that that's, that you have a lot to do, so.
And we could put a blurb in the water bills, right?
Blurb in the water bills, absolutely. We can advertise it on the internet, social media, all of that.
And once we get the new phones installed in a couple weeks, we can put it as part of the call tree, if somebody's calling to ask about it, have pre-recorded message where they can know it's us and more information, press zero.
And where your, where you guys do the billing, I'm assuming that's auto-gathered?
We do it direct, and I'll tell you why. I wish I wasn't on a microphone for this, but I will tell you, because here's how we do that. We do, we bill direct because we deal with people of all economic means, and so some of those people are going, and they're going to mean it, they're going to say, "I'm going to sign up for this, and I'm going to do it one month at a time," and because three months from now, the real world is, they're going to get sick, and they're going to go to the doctor, and that day they will tell us, "I had to make a choice between five seventy-five or my copay at the doctor, and I did not pay you. And the next month, I was still not well, so I had to make a choice between my refill and you." And Murphy's Law is real. So ten days later, they will call us, and they will say, "I don't know what to do, my basement is full." And because this is a National League of Cities program, the answer is not what a business that you're thinking of would say. Instead, it's, "Savis, we noticed that you did not make your payment the last two months. We, we would like to help you, so if you can please make yourself current right now, I would like to pay my eleven dollars and fifty cents, then we will go ahead and send out that plumber to resolve this." That's a very different answer. So that's how this works. And so I, because I opened that box, I need to tell you that if you're one of us that has the means to pay a year at a time, because many of you are sort of like, "Oh, I don't want to get a call," you don't get that deal. If you can pay one, once a year, then the way it works is, I tell you in December, "Hey, it's going to renew in January." And if you tell me, "I don't want, I don't want to renew," I believe you. So in January, if you call, sorry, you told me, and I believe you. But for month, month-to-month, but for month-to-month residents, we understand, it's a different perspective. So I share that with you, because this is a very unique program. So. So anyway, like I said, if you have the information, if she can add us to the next agenda, then I will be happy to come back and help you, let y'all make the decision, and we'll go from there.
I will be out of town.
You're out of town, I see?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll be in DC.
I think you already have the agreement and everything.
Any other questions? I move to adjourn.
Okay, with that, all entertainment mostly to adjourn. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post, say no. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Has Cardi done it yet?
Swap.
You're still on camera.
Yeah.
I know, I'm asking a question there.